All right, good evening, everybody. Today is May 10th. It's the monthly meeting for the planning board. If everybody could please stand and say, "Pledge allegiance."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first item on our agenda is Regency at Glen Ellen update. Had a couple of updates on that. They, Beta, our engineer, had gone through and they had found some winter trash which had blown off from the construction site and a couple of the housekeeping issues they had gone through and they've tuned that up to get it to where there should be. The other item that we wanted to talk about was the parking area. So when we did the special permit, one thing that we neglected to walk through was a staging area for the equipment for the snow removal. So what Glen Ellen has decided to do is they've put the snow removal equipment in the very front of the building and the project, sorry, right near Orchard Street, along with a trailer and which is fine for the residents of the project. However, it did put them towards the abutting neighbors. And also, they had, when one of the storms, the new contractor that they had just hired was extremely exuberant on getting started to beat the storm. So they thought that 2:30 in the morning was the best time to turn the equipment on and run the front end loaders over the rumble strips in the entryway and load up all the sand and salt and store the snow in the front parking lot. So we had touched base with the homeowners association and looked to see if they could maybe either find a different location for the storage of the equipment and the salt and sand or work with the contractor to maybe have the plowing of unnecessary areas start a little later. So I understand, you know, life and safety is one thing. The town, they plow all night. We got it. They were doing parking lots. They were doing sidewalks. That wasn't a necessarily thing to do and if it could be adjusted. So, you know, they do what they have to, you know, at 2:00 in the morning and then maybe 4:00 in the morning, they start to do the other things. That might be something that we would be interested in seeing happen. So I talked to Ted Merchant and he was going to touch base with the homeowners association. And I'd say the thing for the planning board is, you know, if we do have another special permit along with snow storage areas, I think we ought to probably put, think about, you know, where are you guys going to store this stuff? And, you know, should we have it where, you know, hey, you don't do parking lots at 2:00 in the morning. You do the roads and then, you know, maybe later on just because it's, you know, it was a little loud. So anyhow, that was that. And the next item, which we can't go till 7:45, so.
We can do, you can skip down to other business and there's a plan to endorse for Rock. Their site plan was already approved and the appeal period has ended. So you can just make a motion to approve their site plan.
Okay.
And endorse it.
All right.
And you can go sign that.
Cool. That'll eat up a few minutes. So I make a motion that we approve the, or approved, the previously approved site plan for 813 Main Street, approval of propane tank installation.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So we can go sign that and that'll keep us busy for a couple of minutes. Oh, do you actually, do you guys want me to bring it to you guys? We can do that.
I can do it.
I wanted to do this since for myself.
There's three copies to sign. And you don't need to, you can just use a regular pen because it's not in my locker. And if you wouldn't mind just putting, let me see, did they put an approval date on there?
Recommendation of George Jared for to be an associate member. George has a little bit of knowledge about the planning board, so I think he would be an excellent choice to recommend to the selectman, select board, sorry.
I agree, absolutely. Should we have him come up and introduce himself?
Go ahead, go ahead, Scott.
A FIBZI for a living union. I would back that as a citizen. I watched George for 20 something years on this board. I think his voice is important to this town and I think as an associate member, it's, there's a lot of things that he, coming down the pipe, it's going to be important to have that extra voice within the board. So I recommend it as well. I think he's great. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Scott. So I make a motion to approve George Jared.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Actually, we don't approve him. We have to recommend.
Well, we rang it to the select board, yeah. But I did say that earlier, didn't I?
Okay.
I did. I'm pretty sure I did. All right, next item is the approval of the minutes from April 12th, 2022. I read the minutes and they were correct as usual. Can I get a second?
Second. Oh, I'm sorry.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
On the correspondence in the back, you can look at the McDonald's email.
Okay, we can talk about that. Yeah, that's good. All right. So in other business, there.
No, in correspondence, that's because we can't, we must just do it.
Oh, sorry, correspondence. In correspondence, there was a request from McDonald's to look at the existing landscaping that abuts the Little Plaza on Milliston Place. So there's some established arbivites there and according to their plan, they were going to have to encroach onto those plants, which would then need them to be cut down. And it seems a bit silly to cut down, you know, fully established trees and, or, you know, their bush tree type of thing and, you know, to put in new little trees. So they wanted to go back to the developer and figure out exactly what they wanted to do. But I wanted to go to the board and see if, you know, if it makes sense for us to allow them to, you know, plant in front of those, if that works with their layout versus, you know, having those established bushes cut down. Like I said, if it works with their design.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Robbin.
Their email states that they actually want to request from the property owner of the plaza to pull those up because they feel that planting their items, their plantings along that edge, the arbivites are going to encroach. It seems to me that we either request that they use some of that plantings on another location on the lot or in lieu of that, that they make a donation to the tree fund. Because, as you said, those, you can, in the picture, these are well-established. I mean, I don't know, they, they're almost as high as the fence. So I'm assuming that's, they're five, they're at least five feet tall. As you said, there's no reason to rip them down. And if they were to plant something along them, I would assume these arbivites are going to choke out whatever new planting they put in.
No, I think that it might be all right. I mean, I think we should defer to them to what they, you know, what they say, but I mean, in my mind.
Give them the option.
Give them the option. No, and I agree, that makes sense, is, you know, you guys could, you could leave them, you know, and plant in front of them or, you know, they could reduce the amount of plantings they have.
Mr. Chair.
The, yeah, again, their concern is that if they trim them, they will grow back. To which I would say, if they grow back, they can trim them further.
Yeah.
And maintain their new plantings as well.
Yeah. Well, let's see what they come back with. I just wanted to see what you guys had up.
This is just a follow-up email that they sent this afternoon because they could not make the meeting.
Right. And so with the follow-up email they sent, we are not able to attend the meeting tonight to discuss. McDonald's is planning to touch base with the abutting property on the potential landscape changes and will follow back up when we have a firm understanding of what specifically the proposed landscaping changes would entail in additions to the shrubs being removed. So do we want to send an email back to them and say that the planning's board opinion is to, if they could work with their, with the existing larger, if they take them down, they're not putting up, they're not going to put up 15-foot arbivites. They're going to put up little rinky-dink things and then we'll be looking at the backside of that other building. I personally think.
It's going to be several years before those, the new arbivites reach the height and width of these current.
1982, because that was big deal when I was in high school, that McDonald's was coming to Millis, so.
That was a big deal at Dover Sherbin, that McDonald's was coming to Millis.
Do we recall what their plantings are?
No.
I pulled, I did look at the map, at the map, at the plan and there are, I want to say four or five larger and then there's a bunch of smaller things that eventually, but they are going to be, you know, ground, a lot of this ground cover with, and I think that's their concern about it growing over because they were going to have ground cover with, say, five trees.
Sure.
And even when those trees are matured, they're not going to provide the wall of blockage that these arbivite do.
So do the trimming and trim as necessary down the road. Seems to be adequate. They don't need open, a lot of open space around their plantings. They just need one for the planting.
That's fine. So do we want to send a memo back to them stating something to that sort?
That would be my preference.
Okay, that's fine. We can do that. We'll, we could write it up and I can, I could send it for you guys to review.
So we want them to do the planting, abutting up to the arbivite or?
Well, I would say we would, the goal would be, our goal would be to maintain the arbivites. However they do it, I don't care.
Okay.
And then we'll see what they come back to.
Yeah, I would prefer to see the arbivite remain.
Yeah.
Yep.
Because I think that provides, it does provide coverage just when you're driving down the street. You're not seeing the back of that part of the plaza.
Yeah.
So if, yeah, I agree. If they want to plant in front of it, they can plant in front of it and do a lot of trimming.
All right, we'll put something together and send it out. You guys can send it back to Camille because we can't deliberate. But we can, we can, we can take a look at that. Oh, it actually has the plan right here. Yeah, so they're showing little ones and some big ones. All right. And.
So these are five.
Sure. Just a little bit of maintenance.
All right, sounds like a plan. All right, and now it being 7:45, we have a special permit for with site plan approval. Public hearing continued for 1375 Main Street. This is to be continued without discussion to next month.
Could be continued to June 7th at 7:30 p.m.
Yeah, okay, to June 7th at 7:30 p.m.
Town of Millis offers to the planning board notice of public hearing. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 48, Section 11 Mass. General Law, the planning board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 10th, 2022, at 7:45 p.m. in the Veterans Memorial Building, Room 229, 900 Main Street, Millis, on the application of Tony Verzura, sorry, I apologize, Adversa Wellness, Inc., 1375 Main Street, Suite B, requesting a special permit for with site plan approval of the zoning board, of the zoning bylaw of the town of Millis for proposed manufacturing marijuana establishment and a portion of an existing industrial building located at 1375 Main Street, Suite B, Millis, Mass. Assessors Map 21, Parcel 5. Owner, L&amp;L Realty Holdings. A copy of the application and site plan is on file in the office of the town clerk and can be viewed on the Millis Planning Board's webpage. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and place designated. Richard Nichols, Chair.
All right, and as I said earlier, that one's to be continued without discussion till June 7th at 7:30.
Do we need a motion to continue?
Yes.
I make a motion to continue the public hearing to June 7th without discussion.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Do you want to make a July?
Sure. We have June 7th. If we could do a July one, great.
Oh. I don't want to do the 5th. Is, no.
No.
Okay. We get the 12th, the 19th, and the 26th. Anyone have any preference?
It's all good.
The 12th is fine.
I can, I have to have the 12th.
12th? You can't?
No.
Okay.
It's my mother's birthday.
No, that's mine. 19th?
Is that too late for you? If we do the 19th?
We don't have any applications yet and we, as long as we hold the hearing within 60 days. So I think we should be okay.
Okay. All right.
July 19th.
19th, yep.
Do you want to do an August one while we're on it or do you want to wait? It's up to you guys.
Sure, why not?
August 9th?
Sure. How's the 9th work for everybody on August?
Let's do it.
And we can certainly change that because I don't post till a month in advance. So tend to leave August 9th.
And not that we're bringing it up right now, but it was a pending item, which was the approval of 1375 Main Street Canopy Solar Project. That is also on hold, which we had to approve the as-built plans. There's an issue with the building permit, which is holding that up.
So is this, is this something we need to talk about?
No, that's the one, oh, that one. Oh, yeah, we could. So if you look in your packet, there was, Beta had suggested putting together a guideline for contractors for applications. So they end up knowing what applications they should, they should file for and how to go about doing it. And we thought that would be a good idea to proceed with that. So now I can read the, since we have a minute, I will read the memo from Beta. Dear Mr. Nichols, Beta Group has been providing engineering review services for land development projects permitting in the town since 2015. This has included site plan and special permits for the planning board, EHIR review for the Board of Health, NOI and stormwater review for Conservation Commission and stormwater and land disturbance for the select board. While Beta has become accustomed to the permitting paths required for various types of projects, it's not necessarily clear to applicants or town staff at the onset of the project to what permits are required. This letter provides a scope and fee for Beta to provide a town with a land development permitting guidance flow chart document to aid town staff and applicants in understanding what is required to, for permitting a project. So this will basically help out everybody. It'll help out the town and it'll help out the developers to know which permits that they need to go for. So they'll be able to do that. I would imagine they would have, we actually ought to talk to her about how long it would take too. You know, it's not just, you know, here, here's the steps, but I would, I would probably ask her to put an anticipated timeframe on it.
Yep, she could. Yeah, it's more of a flow chart, I think, just so the developer knows.
Right. But, you know, knowing that is, you know, I know, if, you know, if somebody applies for something, it has to go through one or two meeting cycles. So that's going to be 60 days. So it probably would be good for a developer or just to have a, you know, an idea of what the usual timeframe of that would be.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Robbin.
I see that the fee for this from Beta would be not to exceed $1,500. It would be my suggestion to you as chair to send a notice of this to Bob Weiss, the Economic Development. My reason for this, only being is that I know that the town of Medway just recently received a grant to cover the cost of this. Not to ask for his input in it, but to see if they're, if he's aware of any grants that could cover the expense of this.
Okay, we can do that. We have the money in the budget. That's why, that's why we were, but if we can get it for, as a grant, that would be good. Yeah, it's, we have to use it or lose it. That was the, yeah, that was the, that was the impotence of, but we can ask that tomorrow. I'll do that.
Okay.
No.
I will, our next meeting is next week, so I'll ensure that it's on the agenda and that it is simply with regards to granting.
Yeah. If, no, if we can get it, if we can get it through the state.
If the state can, yeah, the state can pay for it.
That'd be good. Yeah, just we have to, we have our year-end budget that we have to. So if the process took longer.
Right. Well, if there's, and there's time, there's, a lot of these grants, they'll open on a certain date and if we're looking to do it now, it may not fall into the, into the timeframe of a current grant.
Okay.
But it may just be some, if he's aware of something that we can submit and it's not too time-consuming to do.
Okay, cool.
Do you want to sign some bills?
When it's not my money, I'm happy to sign.
This is for your statements? And which, just you need to sign.
Yep.
The directions.
What?
I want to tell the audience why we're doing.
Oh, I guess we could do that. So anyhow, for you in the, at the home audience, we have the agenda previously posted. So we're not allowed to actually start until the item comes up and the next item is set for 8:00. So that's why we're, that's why we're in slow motion and we're killing time. So we've got five minutes, so.
It's a public hearing, so it can't stop.
So go get a snack and come back.
I was going to say, yeah, if you're at home, you could run out, get a snack.
We're not afforded the same luxury.
Take the dogs for a quick walk.
I was about to say, you can hear my dog probably in the rest of the street.
Do we have any town updates?
We didn't get a town update from this, this month, however.
We didn't put one together for everyone.
I'm trying to think if there's anything. They're still working at Glen Ellen. They're plugging away over that and they, let's see. Oh, Emerson Place, they are, they're waiting for a pipe to come in over there to work on the water lines. They've been doing some drainage work and they're waiting for an approval on the bridge, the culvert that goes over the, that little seasonal stream. And so they'll be doing a little bit of work over there. They've put in, they're working on the foundations for the model homes, so they're going to put those in. And what else? They did cut down trees over on 109 near Large Road. I did see that.
Yeah, that's some land clearing back there.
Yeah, but that's, that's not under our jurisdiction. That's a, that was in a, some, I think it's affordable housing or is it apartments? One of the, one of the two. Yeah, okay, so it's an affordable housing complex on 109.
Yeah, that is affordable.
Okay.
I mean, affordable.
Right, so. And beyond that, there really wasn't a lot else going on, so.
Existence of buildings moving along?
With, with, oh, on which one? Oh, and, oh, sorry, on Bridge. Sorry about that. I keep on thinking about, yes, the project on Bridge Street is going along. Actually, they did reach out to the select board. The select board had approved a sign on Bridge Street. The initial approval package from the, from the company had the sign and it was by magic of Photoshop, there were no trees around it. In reality, there are some trees. So they're, they're going back to the, to the select board for, to see if they could remove trees and also they may change the size of the sign, which they'd have to go to ZBAA if they did that.
They started the outbuildings, so aside from the main building, they'll be.
I haven't been up there. Yeah, other than, oh, they have, okay. You know more than I do. I see it on Bridge Street when I'm driving by at 40 miles an hour, so.
40 miles an hour on that road, huh?
Yeah, that's the speed limit. If you just came in, if you could sign in, please. And we got one minute.
Oh, you Mr. Nichols.
Good, thank you.
Been a while?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I am going to, on the next public hearing, I'm in butter, so I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay. Do you want to read it out? Or, oh, or should we let the?
Oh, gosh. What a responsibility.
You read things to the, yeah, you read things to your kids. We could let Josh do it.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, I think it's close enough to 8:00. So now it being 8:00, we have a special permit application for earth removal. Public hearing continued for 4,500 yards of loam at Blueberry Lane for construction of two homes. If you could read the.
Great, yeah. Town of Millis, Office of the Planning Board, knows a public hearing. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 48, Section 11 MGL, the planning board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 10th, 2022, at 8:00 p.m. in the Veterans Memorial Building, Room 229, 900 Main Street, Millis, on the application of Michael Coratola Silva, Development. of Michael Coratola, Silva Development, 65 Cape Road, Mendon, Massachusetts 01756, requesting a special permit under Section 13, special permit conditions, paragraph F, for removal of 4,500 yards of sandy loam for construction of two homes at lots 5, 6, and 7, Blueberry Lane. Assessor Map 39, Parcel 65, 66, and 67. Copy of the application site plan is on file in the office of the Town Clerk and can be viewed on the government website. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and place designated, Richard Nichols, Chair.
All right, so the first thing we want to say is that the applicant who is here tonight would want, decided that they would like to remove the application for earth removal without prejudice, so I make a motion that we.
You might just want to have this discussion in case any of our reports say anything.
Okay, that's a good point, all right. All right, so, yeah, okay, we'll do that first. So there was actually some correspondence from some of the neighbors, so before we close the public hearing, if, if any of the neighbors, if they want to get up and express any concerns.
Good evening, Matt Miller, 3 Blueberry Lane. Just following up to one of the emails that we had sent last night, sort of representing the, the neighbors, just a lot of dust that has really spilled out into all the homes and, you know, this time of year, obviously, without any snow, without any, anything to kind of prevent it, it's going to probably get worse before it gets better. And so that was sort of the, the intent behind the, the email from the Miller family last night, so anything to add on that, pretty much, just? Are any questions on that, or any back and forth?
No, I mean, that's, we understand the, the issue. At this point in time, the item that was in front of us was the earth removal process permit, sorry. And since they're withdrawing it, at this point in time, other than being able to receive your input, there is not much we can do. That'll have to go to the building department and, and, you know, I'm sure the developer will work with, with them to, you know, do whatever needs to be done to mitigate that dust, the dust issues.
Okay.
So, but thank you for bringing that forward.
Sure.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything? All right, I make a motion that we accept the withdrawal of the special permit application.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. All right, good, thanks for coming, I appreciate it. Okey-dokey. And, yeah, I know, I'm going to do that next, hold on. All right, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. All right, I think beyond that, I think that was it we had for tonight.
Rockies.
Already did Rockies. We did that, we signed it, remember? No, I think we were Speedy Gonzales tonight, so. All right, with nothing else, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. Thank you, everybody.